All right. Good evening. Welcome to the Canyon Lake POA Board Meeting. It is Tuesday, July 2nd. We welcome everyone here. And as usual, we'll call the meeting to order. And we will begin with a pledge of allegiance. If you please rise, remove your hats if you're wearing one, and Director Doherty will lead us in the pledge. And if you came to this room and you weren't sure it is not Taco Tuesday. But we are here for a good meeting. Welcome everyone's presence both here and online. Let's start with a verification of quorum, please.
Director Cook?
Here.
Director Bill?
Here.
Director Commission? Director Doherty?
Here.
President Van Vliet?
Here.
Hearing five in favor, motion carried.
Great, thank you. Do we have any public officials here tonight? I don't see any.
Can you go back to the minutes, please, and approve them?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have the minutes from the June 4th Board Meeting, because everyone has reviewed them. Would someone like to make a motion to approve them?
Motion. Second.
All in favor of approving the minutes? Say aye.
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 Hearing five in favor, motion carried.
Great. And while we're on the subject, since we're approving things, let's, the consent agenda, the, to ratify the monthly financial statements that we reviewed earlier today, and the report of executive session actions. And also any, well, those two items. Can we have a motion to approve the consent agenda, please?
So moved. So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of approving these consent agendas, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Hearing five in favor, motion carries.
Thank you, Andrea. And we do not have any public officials, so this is going to go a little quicker. We will begin with, we have a presentation from our new manager of Community and Marine Patrol. Ken told her he's going to take us through some of the details. Is my agenda?
Good evening, everybody. We're going to talk about the 4th of July. Now, last year after the 4th of July, there was a lot of feedback, warranted feedback, genuine feedback from the community. Some things happened that were unforeseen, so now that we've seen them, I can promise you that both the POA and the Board of Directors have been spending this past year working out solutions and suggestions to mitigate those issues. And this presentation is what was decided on and what's going to be in place for this year's celebration. Starting with service providers, because of the traffic, because of the clogged streets, service providers can't show up and park their trucks to do whatever service they would do on that day. So we're not allowing any service providers to enter as usual. If you, a member would like to have them in, they would have to put them on their personal guest list as a temporary for that day. These, this does not apply to any medical providers. Those will be waved through as usual. Let's talk about the lodge. There will be barricades and officers used to close the lodge at 4:00 PM. Now, that's the time we've put on there, but as you know, sometimes things happen quicker than we should. We think they will with the the attraction and the event being so popular. So we're definitely have teams onsite at 4:00, but we may fill up before that. Once we use the barricades at Canyon Club and Lighthouse, we're only going to allow, once that lot is full, only ADA drop-offs. So if you have a special needs person, you have the placard, we're going to allow you to go in and drop off, but you'll have to come back out to find a parking space. All vehicles, including golf carts, must park in designated spots. And parking violations are doubled during this event, as are all citable issues. Talking about the parks and beaches, a lot of feedback that people would come out at 3:00 in the morning, like a ninja, and put out their pop-ups or their towels or what have you to save space. And people would get out there at sunrise and be upset that they didn't have a place to go. So to keep it as available to everybody as possible, we will have, we already have signage that says if you leave something behind in these locations, the Community Patrol is going to gather those items and take it back to Bluebird. We're going to have staff out there overnight on a graveyard shift monitoring those places. And they, the Community Patrol has a pickup truck and they're ready to fill that up with items as needed. Now, if you go ahead and leave it out there and it's picked up, feel free to come by Bluebird to pick that stuff up. In fact, you have until Monday, July 8th, to gather your things back. One of the big things that was set out is the crowding at sunset. And if there was an emergency to get from one end to the other, or get to the actual shoreline, was near impossible. And there's a photograph that illustrates that perfectly. So we have designated a pathway that's going to be using delineators and caution tape. And we'll be staffed with the Community Patrol member to monitor that and make sure that we keep that open. Later, we'll have RSO at those beach locations too, to maintain those spaces as more and more people show up for the fireworks. Another thing we're trying new is the hot points, the hotspots that had more vigorous activity. We're going to add to our surveillance system with two portable surveillance camera towers, put in a couple of locations, and according to the vendor, that will go right to my phone. So I'll be able to monitor right from there. We'll be installing that and testing that tomorrow. And at very least, we'll have it all recorded for later, but definitely have it in the palm of my hand so I can dispatch officers where they need to go. And towards the end of this, I'll be personally standing next to the captain of the sheriff's station over on the breezeway, so we can communicate those issues as they're going, as they're happening. Speaking of the main causeway, we are going to continue this year, the, the short-term tradition of blocking off traffic and allowing people to have a seat and enjoy the show from there. We're going to ask that everybody as quickly as they can disperse from that area. And we have a very measured and safe reenactment or reactivating of the street for vehicle traffic. And with the sheriff's presence there, the Community Patrol presence and myself, we're going to make sure that happens in a very safe manner. We're going to, the 30 minutes is, is, we're going to try and get it in 30 minutes. We're, we're at the, everybody walks at their own pace, so we're going to be patient and knowing everybody have a good time today. But if we can make our goal of 30 minutes, that would be great. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ken. Hey, a couple of questions if you would. So the, there's a little bit of confusion because we have some different signage on the causeway right now.
Yes.
So the hours that it will be closed is what, 8:30, 9:30, or roughly?
We just, and I left my phone over there, we had just been texting back and forth to fix those. So those signs are going to be corrected before the event. And I can get, I can get that for you soon as I go back to my phone and see what they were saying.
Great, thank you. You have any questions? Comments, board members? Anyone in the audience have any questions on this? Please come forward and want to comment?
Thank you. Where are these two cameras going to be located? And are they going to be permanent or just during the?
They're going to be just during the event. They're going to cover the areas that don't normally have the best of camera coverage closer to the beaches where all the partying was.
Alright.
Yes, so that's, that's going to be the locations.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Your, your staff is doing a great job.
Thank you very much.
Especially Zach.
Yes, we love our Zach, don't we? Thank you.
Thank you, Najwa. These, these are substantial changes from last year. Following last year's 4th of July event, many of our residents and members came out to speak and, and offer us a number of constructive recommendations on how to improve things. And so you can see we've implemented quite a bit. In addition to things that Ken mentioned, we are increasing our patrols, both, both sheriff and Community Patrol officers almost to 60% over last year. So this is substantial increase. Now, what's really important is that all of you go out and, and tell all your friends, post or whatever, there are a lot of changes and people are going to be used to doing things the way they've always done them. And they may get really mad if they show up at, at times and put something on the beach and they come up, come by later and it's, it's missing, or whatever the changes are. So please help us communicate, get the word out. I don't think we know, over-communicate any of it, if we could.
Just to piggyback on what Bill said, first of all, thank you for the proactive approach and everything that you're doing. It's great to see a plan all put together like this.
Thank you.
One thing I wanted to ask you, and I wanted to get out there for everybody, because I know you answered this for me earlier. How are you getting the information out to people? Where can they find, other than Facebook rumors? Where can they find the proper information on how this is going to proceed tomorrow, other than the website you had and Facebook?
We have some pamphlets that were made up by our communications department. And they brought us a stack and I took them to Bluebird and they transferred them to all the gates. So all the officers have the awareness package in front of them. And I've been watching on video, in some cases, members will go into Bluebird and they're just handing them the brochure and saying, share it with your friends. So there's that in-person approach also. I was just emailed the final draft of our safety video. I did a voiceover for that and communication, made it look good and all that. And so they're ready to pull the trigger on that tonight or tomorrow morning to put another layer on that. It'll be on our YouTube channel.
Thanks, appreciate it, Ken.
True.
I just wanted to point out, one of our biggest issues last year were guests. Not, you know, everybody needs to be responsible for who they're calling in. And, and that's huge. I mean, I didn't have power for 24 hours. And when it's 100 and something degrees, it's not fun here. Thank God there's a lake to sit in. But you guys need to be responsible, and that means for parents too, when your kids have access to Dwelling Live, don't let them call on all their friends as well. I think that's been a big issue, especially at some of the beaches and so forth. They're coming in here to party for that day. So you will be responsible for it. And we will be ticketing if your guests are having issues or getting in trouble with us. So just, just be careful who you call in and be aware.
And then one less, one final exclamation point, if you, if any of you are aware of how, how big this undertaking is, our, our city doubles or triples in size on the 4th of July typically. So it's a big undertaking. Our staff has done a tremendous job. They put together a 21-page document describing all of the, all of the items that are, that are going to happen, when they happen, and the procedures and so forth. So I commend again Ken, Kerry, Harmony, the whole, everyone in the staff involved with us in communications too. This is a really great job and we, we expect to be able to see much better results this year. So thank you. Question?
4th of July rules. Maybe when they come in the gate, we have a QR code somewhere that they can easily take a picture of and scan where it says 4th of July rules. So everybody coming in the gate has quick access to what we're asking them to do. You know, it might be a good thing.
Thanks for the suggestion. All right, thank you, Ken. Next, we, on a related topic, there is a, we'd like to hear from Community Patrol update.
Good evening, good evening, everybody. My name is Captain Wells. I am the security captain here at Canyon Lake. So for the month of May 2024, we had zero calls about speeding and we also had no citations issued by the patrol officer. We had 86 calls come in for parking with 336 citations issued. 78 calls were called out for unauthorized entry at our gates. 11 citations were issued for non-compliance. We had 48 calls regarding e-bikes, 22 citations were issued total. For noise complaints, we had 21 calls, three citations were issued. We had a lump sum of 158 calls for the month of May. We also had a total of 18 callers unable to locate. 273 citations were issued to guests. One citation was issued to a service provider. 225 were issued to members. 407 of those were warnings. 56 speed trailer citations were issued. Nine vandalism reports were submitted. 19 property damage reports were submitted with 121 other violations found throughout the community that were also addressed. There, as of July 1st, 2024, there's been a 571 e-bikes registered with the POA. In May, our gate officers confiscated 185 passes at the gate. We spent 37 minutes at main gate assisting with two lane protocol to a, a help entry into the community and 18 minutes at east gate to help entry into the community. So totaling 55 minutes that staff was at the gates to assist entry.
Zach, a couple of questions. With the 4th of July coming, kind of an unwritten rule for the people who've lived in Canyon Lake for a while, know not to go out of your, of the, of the gates after, after 12 o'clock because there are long lines getting in. What are we doing with, at the gates to facilitate, keep people out of, out of backing up onto River Canyon and Gets Road?
So pretty much what we do at the, during the two lane protocols is just a more extreme. We're going to actually have two additional staff at main gate assisting with entry, as well as another staff walking through, trying to advise people of where to go in line, what, what documents you need for entry and trying to assist get people through. So there'll be a total of four people printing passes at main gate alone. Over at east gate, we're going to have additional staff over there as well to assist with traffic and same with north gate. So each, each gate will have additional officers there trying to provide information to the guests as well as being able to assist with printing passes.
Thank you, Zach. Also, I know I'm very pleased to hear that we have 571 bikes, e-bikes registered now. So thank you for all the, all the parents who are, who are doing that. Going along with that, we also have a reward system. And tell us a little bit on how the rewards are going.
The rewards are going alright. Right now, we have over 40 vouchers that have been passed out to individuals that have been fined riding in the community, doing exactly what they're supposed to, had a helmet on if they're underage, had their e-bike registered, they were not doing anything reckless while riding around. And they received a voucher from Community Patrol that they were able to take over the POA for a, for a prize and reward for being a good compliant.
And the last thing that goes with that is the other side of that is we have, it's encouraging to see that that we have, you're citing people for not following the rules. And that's, that's steadily climbed each, each month. So I think that's good. I do also want to point out, there, the beginning of this month, I think it was the day, the first Monday after school was out. We've, already this month, we've had three accidents with, with children on bikes, on e-bikes, where they've run into vehicles or, and so forth. And so again, I want to press the importance upon the parents in the community. I know the kids don't always do what we ask them to do, but it is very important to please remind them of, of safety and so forth, because that's what we, that's what we want to hear more than citations. We want to make, have all of our kids be safe in the community, so. Any other director comments? All right, Zach, thank you. Director Cook, the floor is yours.
I am very fortunate tonight to give the Member of the Month award to somebody in this community that's probably given behind the scenes more than I can, anybody I can remember. Mr. Joe Grazo moved to this community in 1995. He's been part of the Bassmasters Clubs forever. He served as Board Member, Secretary, Treasurer, Vice President and President. He's always been a contributor on any event that we've ever had, including the Kids Fishing Derby. He's always managed the Bassmasters Fiesta Day booth. He helped with a collaboration of getting that fish, the Bass Fish Station in, the weight station in, with myself with Rec, on Rec Committee, really took the lead on that. He also, for over 20, almost 19 years, 20 years, was on the Fiesta Days Committee. If you guys know, this committee was a, a job. This wasn't just giving feedback to the community what we want to do. This was a job for them and they did a great job. He was a chair on that committee for four years. He was on the Lake Dredge Committee. He was on the Rec, Rec Committee. He was also the Rec Committee Chair. Those are all the volunteer stuff that he's done on committees. There's so much more that you guys, behind the scenes, that it's just been incredible. One other thing that no people don't realize and he does behind the scenes is anytime we need a sign made, he is there at the snap of a finger to get it done for us on a timely basis. Whether it be, helps supply a lot of the slides and the jumpers we see at Fiesta Days. And there's, the list goes on and on and on of what he's done for this community for the last, I don't know, 1995? How long is that? 35, 25 years? So I, I would like to welcome this Member of the Month, Joe Grazo, up. I'm proud of, to be called you my friend and, and volunteered right next to you for many, many years. Thank you, Joe.
All right, let's get down to business now. We have no announcements. Are there any member comments?
I do not have any member comments.
Very good. We will keep sailing along right into our, our published business. Consent agenda has been approved, so let's start with item 8.1, Committee Policy by Harmony.
Good evening. Yes, this is our annual review of our committee policy. Board meets in a few days of orientation every year and evaluates our policies. This year, the one change they'd like to see, which requires open session approval, is to extend the term, the consecutive term of our chairs from two years to three years. Recommended that the Board of Directors approve to revise the Canyon Lake POA Committee Policy as attached.
We have a motion for, for this item?
Motion. Second.
Are there any member comments or questions about this item? Just raise your hand if you, if you do, and if not, we'll keep moving. Okay, director comments or questions? Can we give a little more background on the, on the motivation for this?
Sure. We, we would like to see some more tenure in our leadership on committees. As you know, they're all volunteers and it takes some leadership to run them. So I think the real intention here is just to keep our good leaders in their position for a little longer. It's adjusted every year, trying to find the balance. And this is the effort toward a better balance.
Thank you, Harmony. Any other comments, Joe?
Yeah, I just want to stress, you know, we really appreciate anybody that wants to serve on a committee, especially the chairman of the committee. And we wanted to give them a little bit more time to get comfortable and do their job. And I want to stress that this is not mandatory three years. This is that you're, you're up there. It's not a sentence, no. This is what we'd like to see and, and you're, you're welcome to serve for those three years. We encourage that, but don't let that discourage you either. Thank you.
All right, all in favor of approving this item? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Hearing five in favor, motion carried.
The next item, I will take, I will do this one. Let me see what page is on 72. So this is appointment to Architectural Control Committee. One of the things that we've done this year with the board and the past year with the board is, is instead of just having one representative liaison to the Architectural Control Committee, we actually rotate it, which is, which is very helpful for us as the board as we see appeals and other things come forward. It also helps us understand the committee and how it works. And, and we hope it also provides better exposure to the committee to understand all the various board members and maybe the different perspectives that are, that are brought to bear when it comes to decisions. I will also say, I believe this is our hardest working committee that we've got. They meet twice, two days every week, every week of the year. And so they, they put in a Herculean amount of time. And we rely on this committee very heavily to offset a lot of the duties that otherwise staff would have to do. So we tremendously appreciate what they're doing. We have an opening in the, in the ACC. And it has been open for a bit, for an alternate member. And interviews have been conducted, have been conducted of interested candidates. Chris Poland was, was, is being recommended. He is a past president of the POA. He also is a licensed registered engineer. And so it is proposed, or recommended that Board Directors approve the appointment of Chris Poland to the Architectural Control Committee as an alternate effective immediately. Is there a motion?
Motion. Second.
Member comments? Anyone have a, have a comment on the matter? Director comments? Right, all in favor of appointing Chris Poland to the ACC, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed?
Hearing five in favor, motion carries.
Thank you. All right, how about the Recreation Committee? Steve?
Good evening. This is a, a committee appointment for the Recreation Committee. Allison Peacock has been selected for an open position on the Recreation Committee. The, the committee unanimously accepted the member on June 11th during their monthly committee meeting. Is recommended the Board of Directors approve this appointment of Allison Peacock to the Recreation Committee, continue upon execution of a confidentiality agreement.
We have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Any member comments on Allison Peacock or the position? No member comments? Director comments? Questions? None. All in favor of approving Allison to the Rec Committee, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed?
Hearing five in favor, motion carries.
Thank you. All right, Steve, you have the ball. Let's keep rolling with it.
All right, one more Recreation Committee appointment. Natasha Wright was selected for an open position on the Rec Committee. The Rec Committee unanimously accepted this member on June 11th during their monthly committee meeting. Is recommended the Board of Directors approve the appointment Natasha Wright to the Rec Miss, excuse me, Recreation Committee, continue upon execution of a confidentiality agreement.
Motion?
Motion. Second.
Member comments? Anyone have a comment on this one? Director comments? I'll make one comment. I, I, I don't know Allison at all, so I can't really comment on that. But it's nice to see with this committee, we got a broad representation. We're getting some younger family members on it, which I think is healthy because our community is becoming more diverse. And so I think, I think that's a good move. All in favor of approving Natasha to the Recreation Committee, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed?
Hearing none. Five, sorry. Hearing five in favor, motion carried.
Thank you. All right, next is a 28-day reading to revise Rule PC 4.119, Property Maintenance Required. Cheryl?
Thank you, good evening. So we do have two for this evening. And the first one is for PC 4.19, for Property Maintenance Required. The staff in the committee is seeking approval from the Board of the Directors for a revision to PC 4.19 for, and for a 28-day reading. The revised rule is to state changes to reflect a more defined understanding of what is considered storage, such as unsightly property with bags of trash, garbage, business, or construction materials, or supplies, items for recycling, and vehicle parts, to name a few. The revision is an attempt to stop unnecessary storage of miscellaneous items stopped from storing on long-term basis. And the properties are to be kept clean, kept maintained in clean manner to ensure value is not diminished and harmony established in the neighborhood. So it is recommended the Board of Directors approve a rule revision for PC 4.19- So it is recommended the board of directors approve a rule revision for PC four point one nine property maintenance required for a twenty-eight day reading as attached.
Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second? I will second it. Any member comments on, on this item or questions? No member comments? Board? Any director comments or questions?
The key words that are added here in my mind are long-term storage of any items not regularly used. I think that's a nice way of saying, if you have a bunch of stuff in your yard that you're not using, doesn't move around and is not stored out of sight, we'd like to see that as a violation. So I think these, this expansion, the, the chosen words I just read are good. Unfortunately, we, we see this with some regularity where people just don't store their stuff and it never moves and it becomes unsightly. So I think it's a nice clarification.
All right, all in favor of approving this item, say aye.
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 Are there any opposed?
Hearing five in favor, motion carries.
All right, and last but not least, twenty, twenty-eight day reading, structures.
Okay, for the last one, it's going to be PC nine, two point nine for structures, a twenty-eight day reading. The committee and staff is seeking approval from the board of directors for the revision to PC two point nine structures to include other items typically found in the setback, which is considered a C C N R violation. One of the things we want to talk about is structures as a building accessory structures, support post, garden walls, gazebos, decks, spas, and equipment. And the second thing is the notation that no structure may be installed in the five-foot setback and the rear setback. Now, the committee and, and we all met again on Thursday and looked at the rule one more time. We felt it was necessary. There's always a lot of confusion as to what is considered a structure. And so we did put down in there that no structure may be installed in the five-foot side setback, equipment and fixed assets. The one thing that we did, did not know is what, how much we could put into it. The more you put into naming of items, the more it's going to be curtailed to keep it to what's on black and white. So what we said is the side rear setback must remain clear per the C C N Rs. So that would be the addition to what we currently have posted in here. So it's just a secondary addition.
Yeah, fine, maybe what we're worried about is if we start naming everything that can't be in, there's no way to be all inclusive. So bottom line is nothing in the side, five-foot setback.
That's nothing identified as a structure.
Meaning that the setback has to remain clear.
Right. Yeah. Question on that? In the, in the case.
Motion to, to approve, then we can discuss the matter. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, great. Before you ask questions, Joe, let's open it up to the audience. Any, any member comments or questions on this matter? A shed is considered a structure? Okay, director comments, please go, Joe.
Thank you. Three foot, or five foot from the sidewalk, side yard setback and the rear setback. If, if I want to put a raised planter on the adjoining my fence, it's in the setback. And if it's three foot deep and it has a one-foot raised wall, is that considered a structure? It is.
Yes, it is. So if you think about it, ground down, it's not. So you can have concrete all the way to your property line. Unfortunately, coming up from the ground, then it's considered a structure.
And the committee feels that, that's a fair interpretation of the C C N Rs? Is that, is that where that comes from or?
Yes, that's how the committee feels. Yes, sir.
In reading this, in reading it, it says no, it says nothing basically to be put into the setbacks.
Can you explain to me the difference between the planner that he talked about or landscaping that's kind of moving up towards there?
So landscaping can be, can grow up from the ground and that's one of the things that we don't consider anything live landscaping. If you were to build a wall or a, a structure of some sort to house the dirt, to grow the plants, then it would be considered, you know, a structure. Retaining wall, it can be as long as it's retaining the dirt and it's an added for, it's serving a purpose, basically.
So retaining walls by definition can be no higher than the dirt they retain. So they're a needed structure if, if it's a topography issue. The common sense.
Can you help me understand the intent of this rule? What is the, what is the, what's, what's the driving reason for having this rule behind it?
The driving point is to keep, you know, the C C N Rs true to form. The C C N Rs basically state there's something that we can't, you know, change the C C N Rs because we have to have the vote of the community to do that. To get everyone to understand what we mean by structure, we put down structure and then we ended up having to say what kind of things are considered structures. Then we put down, I think it was PC, something else that we were, we were talking about, what is a definition of a structure? So then we got to find out what more do we need to do to say that has to remain clear? And that's the reason why we were stating, because it has to be clear. So we just don't want to name anything. So we said, let's, let's make it sure that it's clear.
I understand why, why you're adding more into this because you don't want, you don't believe anything should be in the, in the five-foot setback. My question is, why? Why, other than what the C C N Rs say, why nothing in the five-foot setback? Is that because you want to, is it access for, for fire for, for, or is there some, what's kind of the reason behind that is what I'm trying to understand?
Some of our C C N Rs don't give us the reasons why, unfortunately. And this is one of them. That's, that's a question that's good to ask all the time. The unfortunate thing is it's not, it's nothing to do with fire. It has nothing to do with having access. It just means that they don't want to have anything in that five-foot setback. It would be my thought is for access purposes and also to have, let's say, for instance, you have a playground and the more footage you have in between the two properties, the more, I guess, privacy would you would have or you would have sound barriers and things like that, especially if you had like a fire pit that was sitting next to there, the smoke comes over. The more distance you have, the better it is. So it could be for multitude of reasons.
In, in my opinion, our C C N Rs sometimes just tell us things must be this way and they're written out that way. And they don't always say because. But we do try and make a little common sense. My knee jerk reaction would be on the five-foot side setback would be so the fire department can get through there and it's not blocked. But that's just my opinion or interpretation.
That, that also, unfortunately, this rule also applies to the backyard where there's no access restrictions at all. So a typical planner on the perimeter of the backyard, three foot from the property line would be in violation. That, yeah.
Technically, yes.
Yeah. Okay.
Can you explain to me how this is going to affect pre-existing things? If something's been there for ten years, how does that affect them? Do they have to rip it out? Do they have to do anything different? You can just clarify that for me.
So it's not going to affect anything that's pre-existing. What will happen is if a member goes through an escrow process and we go and do an inspection and we find something that isn't a setback. At that point in time, we ask for an application. For the most part, the committee cannot, you know, approve anything in a setback unless it's a new owner. So with new owners, it would be a variance for a period in time until that whatever it is, it's in the setback has to be replaced. And then it has to be replaced and it has to meet up with the standards of the C C N R, which means nothing. Then move to an alternate location.
Looks like we have a member comment. If you please come forward.
Kathy Leckowa, I'm lot three, seven, seven, eight, zero, zero, eight. I always have to look. Just a couple of questions that I've been hearing back there in the chatter. Let's say you had an air conditioning unit in that area. Is that not allowed? And if you have to replace your air conditioning unit, then will they not approve it in that same location? A second question is what if you just have a side gate? So the backyard has a sidewalk along the edge and you have a gate there. Is that gate considered a structure?
A gate is movable, so we don't consider gate structures.
And what about the air conditioning case?
Technically, go ahead.
We're going to have to, that, that's something that has to be looked at on a case by case basis. For the most part, it is what it is. Setback has to remain clear. Depending on how long it's been there, what the circumstances are, there are ways, if you have a topography issue where you don't have anywhere else you can put it, then there is a variance process that can happen. But each property does remain, it's all, they're all different out there.
Okay, and on retaining walls, you mentioned as long as it's at the level of the dirt it's retaining. Some of them, I think ours might be, I'm not sure, but, and it was approved, but it, it might be six inches higher. It's pushing back dirt and then there's plants back there.
Is it the cap?
Yeah.
Because we don't include the cap in the, in that.
Okay, and so that's a difference than calling it a planter because sometimes your planters are retaining walls. Okay, that's it.
Believe it or not, we try and be as reasonable as possible.
Either director comments? I'll give an opinion on this where, here's where I struggle with this one personally. We're, I feel like we're, we're debating the definition of the word structure. And to me, a structure is something that you build. It has wood, it has, it has mortar, it has bricks, it has, it has, it's something that's, that's permanent. Where I struggle with this is, is when it comes to definition, where we include equipment, something that is movable, an air conditioner is movable or something like that. Or if you have a home that's, as was mentioned, and it goes out and you can't replace it in that exact same space where it's been for the last twenty years. Now you have to redo all the ducting in your house to move it to another side of the house. I struggle with that one. And so that's where, on this one, that's where I'm personally having some difficulty. With that, let's take it to a vote. All in favor of approving this measure, say aye.
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 All opposed? Nay?
Nay. Same.
Well.
Okay, so we have two yea, two nay.
Two in favor, two against, one abstention, motion fails.
Motion fails. Okay. Thank you. All right, with that. General Manager, Eric.
That was fast again. Thank you, everybody for coming, even though it's not Taco Tuesday. I went to Taco Tuesday last week. It was a great time, great food. We'll pick up here again next Tuesday. And I hope to see y'all here. Our pavement project is mostly wrapped up. Another successful year. There's a few pickup items. We're going to be slurry sealing the parking lots that were done in twenty nineteen this coming October. And we're looking at doing grind and overlay at the main gate entrances. We're also going to be doing, updating our pavement management plan and pavement condition index for the whole community later this month. And that'll help us determine the scope of work for next year's pavement project. Our tennis project over here by the tennis courts, just below the restroom at the bottom of the lodge parking lot is wrapping up. Steve's doing an awesome job on that. Steve basically designed that, had renderings done, sold it to the board. The board approved it. He's managing that project and it's going to be another fantastic amenity for, for Canyon Lake. We've finally done something with that piece of property next to the tennis courts. It was a huge, one huge shade structure, another smaller shade structure with some bleachers. And it's a, it's a great improvement on one of our last pieces of property right by the lake. So thank you, Steve. It's going to be awesome. On August tenth, we have a Craig Campbell concert here in the Holiday Bay room. He sold out last time we were here, so make sure you get tickets for those, that, that show. On November second, we have Colt Ford coming. And I just want to thank activities and security and communications and operations and really our whole staff for all the hard work that they put into all the events that we have here. Fiesta Hopper, that was a very successful event and literally our whole team, there's two hundred of us now that work for the P O A. And everybody from top to bottom is, puts a lot of effort into making Fourth of July happen. And so I hope everybody enjoys this holiday week and the fireworks show and we'll see you out on the lake.
Thank you, Eric. With that, we're gonna, we're gonna wrap up pretty quickly. Greg, why don't you start today?
I would quickly like to congratulate Natasha Wright and then Allison Peacock for getting approved tonight for the recreation committee, for which I am liaison. We have one of our projects coming to fruition here very shortly. We're getting bike racks installed soon at Sierra Park, the pickleball courts and Indian and Sunset Beaches. We have a whole list of other projects and with Natasha and Allison on board and also Ed, Ed Thayer's old friend of mine. Kevin Thayer, as the new chair, we're excited about getting some things done in the coming months. Everyone have a safe, insane Fourth of July. Thank you.
Well, I just want to talk about Tuesday work group. They're, they're putting their, their year, they're taking a summer break. They do every year. The heat, hot weather is a little bit much for all of us, especially those guys, but so they'll be back in October. The green committee meets on second Thursday of the month, one o'clock in the Magnolia Room. They're currently overseeing the golf course being sprayed, the ryegrass being sprayed out to allow the Bermuda grass to grow in. And when the ryegrass is gone and the Bermuda is at full strength, you think the golf course looks nice now. It absolutely looks and plays wonderfully. It's a great thing that we do every year. The driving range sod has been put in, that area has been leveled, looks very nice. I got a report at the green committee that the golf course came in eighty-nine thousand dollars under budget this last fiscal year. That's thanks to a lot of play from the community and our guests. And, and that's been, the subsidy has been going down, I think every year since COVID, if I'm correct. Fourth of July is coming up and I want to encourage everybody to be very safe and cognitive of the crowds that are coming into Canyon Lake. Like Bill said earlier, our population of ten or twelve thousand people doubles or triples during that one day, about one night. So just be cognitive of that happening and enjoy your day, enjoy the evening, enjoy the fireworks. But be safe and stay with your guests because one of the things that we, issues that we had last year that we tried to address is guests acting unruly or not appropriately. And we want to see that the guests are with their property owners. So there's a additional fine if your guest is cited for something and they're not with the homeowner. So just be aware of that and be careful who you invite in. So with that, I wish you all a great holiday. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. Couple of things, speaking of committees, the F P C has got a meeting coming up pretty soon. We're looking at evaluating the tunnels at the causeway and at the golf courses. Typical life on those about fifty years. We're at fifty-five, so we're going to look at the structural integrity. We're also with the next meeting going to look at our five-year plan, so we can look at some of the items on that. Piggybacking on what Joe said with the Tuesday work group, if you're curious about it, you want to learn a skill, these guys, you know, I'm not going to word this correctly, they really kick ass and they can teach you something. And they can teach you something, and if you want to learn how to weld, you want to learn how to pour concrete, if you just want to learn how to get off your ass and do something, I would recommend that you go check them out, especially younger guys. We'd love to get you out there and learn some trades, learn some skills that you can take with you anywhere you go. The other part of the-
They also have some women that are in that group that are to kick ass, too.
They do have some kick-ass women in there, and maybe some of these young guys are afraid of them and intimidated. I'm not sure, because they don't seem to show up for the meetings. So in addition to that, I'd like to address the whole guests over the 4th of July. So yes, the guests have created problems, but so have the residents. So I would ask that you be responsible for yourself as well. You know, when we're out there having a good time, try and be polite, be courteous, just treat people the way you want to be treated. Don't blow off your fingers trying to add to the show we already have going on, and just, you know, just be a human. And like you said, it's not all guests. Everybody makes it out to be all guests. Yes, there's a lot of problem with the guests. There's a lot of problem with the members here, too. So we need to be responsible for ourselves. The other last thing, because I know everybody wants to get out of here because it's a short night, why we labor it. I want to thank Ken again. He has put a lot of work into this 4th of July issue. We all know how it went last year. I was fortunate enough to not be here, but I got to hear about it. And Ken has been proactive. He's only been with us a short time, and he has really laid out a good plan. Now, a lot of people are not going to like his plan, and I'm sure we'll get the complaints next week, because no one wants to be told what to do. However, when you have thousands of people, the crowd has to be controlled. So I would ask that everyone cooperate with Community Patrol. I will tell you that we have it staffed up substantially. We will have sheriff's deputies there. This will be a controlled environment, and I would recommend that everybody kind of get with the program, for lack of a better way to put it. And once again, thank you, Ken. So that's all I've got.
I'm not used to going like fourth in a row. I always get elected, like he gets picked first. It's awesome. I'm on two committees this session, and I'm on the Appeals Committee and the Rules Committee. So kind of the law and order committees, for the most part. I really don't have much to say other than, you know, Joe tonight, recognizing Joe and all his committee work. Committees are vital, vital to this community and the POA. They are our backbone. They're the ones that talk to us. They're the ones that give us ideas. They're the ones that drive a lot of change. So I just want to thank every single committee member that's out there, and welcome anybody that wants to get their, let's put their toe in the water, jump in a committee. The Rec Committee isn't easy. There's an opening on the Rec Committee. That's an easy committee. There's 10 people there. You're not going to get stuck with a lot of work. You're just going to be part of the process of looking for new ideas and so forth like that. So really love that. I'm not going to so much talk about July 4th as all. I'm going to talk about this whole week. This is a week that I think all of us are very proud to live here. It's very patriotic. It's very special. I love it, and whether, you know, the gathering as a parade on Saturday, whatever the parade's for, it's just nice to see everybody coming together as a cause and out there. It doesn't really matter what it is. Saturday, there was a lot going on in this community, a lot. So you couldn't do everything. So it's just a great, for me, it just makes me proud of where I live. Thank you, Art, for, you know, throwing a concert on the bay. The band was amazing. So thank you. That was really nice. Now we roll into 4th of July, guys. Be proud. Let's make this place great again. You know, let's have some law and order. Let's do everything we can to be the best. And you know what? Enjoy the whole weekend. You know, most of us are off until at least Sunday, Monday, so enjoy yourselves. Let's be good. Sunscreen, please, because it looks like it might be baking. So thank you for everybody. Let's do the best we can and be the better people. Thank you, guys.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify something. Earlier, we talked about the structure rule that the ACC presented, and I questioned the structure rule and the planters. And while I'm not against a rule of that nature, I want to stress to the ACC that I had an issue with the planter situation on that that would be affected by that rule. I know variances are allowed, but, and I want to encourage the committee to possibly look at that rule and bring back a version that might be more palatable. So thank you for that.
Thank you all. I want to thank everyone again for coming, for participating in this, whether you're online or here in the office, in the audience, that is. Again, clearly the theme is 4th of July, and I know our household is like a lot of households in Canyon Lake, where usually it's my wife and I in our house. We're going to swell to have 16 people sleeping in that house in a couple of days to enjoy all the festivities. And that's how it is here. And so again, take responsibility, communicate the rules and the changes to your guests as well. Remember that all fines this weekend, Thursday through Sunday, will be doubled, doubled for violations. So if you, when you come into the parking lot here and there's no spaces, if you park on the grass, or if you park on the sidewalk, or you park somewhere else that's not a marked parking spot, you will get a citation, and it will be double the cost. And so everyone just follow the rules. This plan that's been put together has been in place, has been starting since July 10th. That's when we had the meeting where 350 people showed up. We hear you. We're learning from it, and we have great expectations for a wonderful event. So I just want to add my thanks, my thanks to staff, for all of the hard work that goes in, also their time. They're going to be giving up their time to be out here, making sure we have a good time this weekend. So with that, thank you, and thank you all for attending. The next meeting is going to be on August 6th, Tuesday, same place, same station. Good night and thank you. Motion to adjourn.
So motion.
Is that first, second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hearing five in favor, adjourned at 6:56.